And I call this meeting to order. So Claudia?
Counselor Garvin.
Here.
Counselor Geary.
Here.
Counselor Minky.
Here.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Here and accounted for.
Counselor Peralta.
Here.
Council President Drapkin. Um, and Mayor Hill.
Here.
Okay, well, this evening, we have a full agenda as we continue with our goal setting and Wendy Stassen's. It's good to have you back with us, Wendy, and we'll turn the time over to you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nice to see everybody tonight and nice to hear everybody laughing. You have to have a sense of humor when you're having the kind of weather we're having after a year we had.
But the record show she said everyone was laughing.
Yes. You might not have heard everyone because people were on mute, right? Okay, so we're, this session may or may not be a long one. It really is up to you guys. Um, I'm going to bring you guys up to speed. Thank you. First of all, thank everybody so much for your input. That's what we're going to go over, the results of everybody's input, and then where we are now and what's next steps. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen.
And Wendy, while you're sharing your screen, I just wanted to let the record know that, uh, uh, Council President Remy Drapkin is with us now.
Great. Hi, Remy. Okay, does everybody see my screen yet? Uh, hold on. Why isn't it showing the screen? Okay, now? Ah, okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, this is just goal-setting the third session. But we've already had a couple of sessions and learned a lot, and now we're going to look at where we are currently. So I'm going to move forward to the next slide. What we're going to do tonight is we're going to review the conclusions from council and department head inputs that we've had since the last meeting. And in the previous meetings, we're going to review the process undertaken to narrow down the priorities that were selected further. And so we'll want to answer any questions you guys have about that process and whether there's anything that, a concern that has been taken off of the table in that process. And then we're going to evaluate each priority still remaining. So what we've narrowed it down to at this point. We're going to explain next steps. We're going to answer any questions, and then we need your feedback. Of course, we'll be getting your feedback through the whole process, but we'll need your feedback and approval on two things. One is that you guys are good with going forward with the priorities that we've narrowed it down to. And two is the plan for moving forward toward smart goals out of these priorities. So we'll explain how we're going to get from a set of priorities that aren't necessarily specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and are time coupled because it'll be a year, but, um, how we're going to then, what the next step is to get those into smart goals. So, um, and just to remind us where we are in this process, this was set out on the first. We have adjusted this as we've gone along and we've learned more about what you guys need to get clarity. But this is the current, uh, plan for getting to conclusion on goal-setting. We already did the first work session, which was the kickoff meeting. Second work session, remember, we talked about the context and support around homework, and we narrowed the scope by doing the visioning exercise, cap analysis, and then you guys had homework to do that, uh, exercise that Susan explained. Advisory team refined, uh, refined the work and sent some homework that you guys and did between sessions. And out of that came what you guys are going to see tonight. And then tonight, we're going to be looking at approving top priorities that we can then move on to make into smart goals. Uh, after that, so, um, the plan will be that we are going to ask department heads, uh, to work with us on coming up with some proposed smart goals out of the priorities you guys approved tonight. We had heard feedback from you that you wanted more department head guidance on what is, uh, attainable and realistic, uh, where are we now, things like that. So through this process, you'll get more of that when we come back with those smart goals from the department heads. We have a plan between sessions to work with them. And then we'll be presenting to you a proposed set of goals that we'll then have conversation about, feedback on, and then have the final set that you guys are going to be approving in the work session five. So any questions on that? So we're halfway through. No? Hey, so I'm going to jump over to, I'm going to stop this screen sharing on this because I'm going to jump over to the spreadsheet that we created out of your feedback. Let me make sure it opened on my computer.
Wendy, you can't play an eight-letter word in Scrabble.
It's not a realistic slide, is that what you're saying? Hold on a second here. Okay, let's see. Okay, so we're going to start with this first. Um, you guys see my screen again? You should see a spreadsheet. Oh, this is, I'm going to take you all the way to what we got directly from you guys. This is the spreadsheet Susan made for us out of your feedback. Uh, the ones, the top ones you see here that are not grayed out were the ones that got the most votes. And these votes, votes are all he, uh, here, and the number of votes, um, are in this column, so that's what we'll focus on. So the top three were A3, identify and focus on the city's core services. C4, uh, provide exceptional police municipal court. Here, I'm going to, um, hide these just so you can see just the exact ranking and, uh, let's see. We'll make it less confusing. These, basically, these two are what we're looking at, is the rec, number of votes, and then the, the exact team, uh, their input on ranking. And then, uh, so C4, provide exceptional police municipal court, fire, emergency medical, and utility services and public works.
Wendy, can I pause you?
Sure.
Is that C4 list intended to be, uh, comprehensive to the city's services? Or were the, uh, items that were enumerated, enumerated the sole items that we were, um, going to prioritize? By that, I mean, does that mean that we're not prioritizing parks or the library, um, because they're not enumerated in that list? Or is that, so is it inclusive or a non-inclusive list?
So if you mean that, um, this C4 was from the strategic plan, and with regards to whether or not that's, I think this one specifically was around, and we have to go, we'll look at the next slide, has the detailed priorities. The parks aren't listed in that, and yes, it's not, it's not including the park in that particular one. Okay, go ahead, Jeff, maybe you can answer in more detail.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Counselor Peralta. That specific objective comes from the, uh, goal that's related to public safety and resiliency. I would suggest to you that things like library and parks and rec would fall under other goals, particularly, uh, or other objectives perhaps particularly related to, uh, core services. So, um, you know, in the context of that particular objective, it's about public safety and resiliency.
All right, so, so the, in your mind, Jeff, and I guess in this practice, then, the library and parks would be non-enumerated, but part of that, A3, not A4. Got it?
Correct.
Great. Um, and then, uh, F3, which is strategically planned for short and long-term growth and development that will create enduring value for the community. E1, accelerate growth in living wage jobs across a balanced array of industry sectors. And then, um, these last two, C3 and E3, both got three votes, and we kept those in. Uh, lead and plan for emergency preparedness and improve access by identifying and removing barriers to participation. And so exact ranking is, uh, this, uh, column S. And so out of that exercise, we determined to narrow it down and not look at any of the ones that, that were voted lower than that. Any questions on that step that we took?
Uh, just a comment. In light of Jeff's comment, should we not combine, um, C3 and C4?
Right, so, um, what, that's your head of the game, Phil, because, um, this is just picking in the raw data. And then we'll show you in some of the, in, um, the third tab, and we start to like process that data by taking some things out that, and redundancies and things like that, and trying to narrow down to like, uh, something that is more condensed. So yes, these were, this was just the raw data. And you can, you can come back to whether or not you agree with how we narrowed it down when you get to the third tab. Any other thoughts on that, Phil?
Thank you for the explanation.
I have a strange question. It's probably not relevant here, but, um, I'm just going to assume that C4 was executive ranking number two. Is that a, not, that's a bad assumption?
Uh, no, so the, um, the executive team ranked everything.
Okay.
So number two is down here. It was not voted on by the council.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Okay.
Good question. It's not a strange question. I had the same question. I'm like, where is two? Yeah, it's down, uh, the grade.
Thank you.
Hey, you're welcome. Okay, so we also asked you guys to tell us if you noticed anything that was missing. And so we do, did have some things that were identified as missing, and we'll go through those. Uh, one was invest in our youth. Another was the urban, uh, renewal area. Uh, so I can, um, instead of reading all this, I, we condensed it down. Uh, basically, the urban renewal area process, uh, being a priority. Another was, I'm sorry, urban, yeah, I'm sorry, urban reserve area. Um, next step from the urban growth boundary, urban reserve area for the years. Then the strong emphasis on public safety, um, for the LGBTQ population, specifically that expanding our services for that particular population. Uh, I think addressing the overall communication was one that was added as missing, so additional emphasis on communication. Um, and this, these two are similar in that it's communication concerns externally and internally. And then a client action plan, and that was all from city councilors. It felt like there was a gap in even what we were looking at for prioritizing. And then the executive team added some things. Uh, the executive team added the current effort to address the condition of our buildings and parks and planning for future capital improvements and maintenance. Looking for ways to bring additional revenue into the city's general fund. Look at the org structure and ad programs for communications, risk management, fleet management, succession planning. Look for changes that can facilitate knowledge transfers and career pathways. And then more revenue solutions to fund all of these great ideas and intentions. So, um, any questions on that before we move on to the third tab? You're going to see these again in the third tab.
I, this isn't a question, um, and I don't quite know how to phrase this, but, um, I, I'm going to just take this opportunity to stumble through this. I think this is, um, interesting. I'm just going to be like really, Frank, I think this is interesting because when I just read through that with all of you and I saw these, um, you know, now anonymous comments on here. And when I saw, uh, specific growth in services for our LGBT community, I, my palms got sweaty, and I was like, I wonder how many people think that that was me. So I'm just noting that. It wasn't me. I'm curious as to who it was, but it wasn't me, but I think it's interesting. And, um, as, uh, part of the extensive DEI training I've been doing, one thing that we are asked to do is to note those types of, uh, thinking. So I figured this was a good opportunity to play that out in reality because everybody knows what they thought when they read through those. That's all I have to say.
Thanks. Key, Remy. That's, and you know, um, one of the things that it's really good that, that you were able to say that, Remy, because it really, it doesn't, um, it's interesting that it might have been a conclusion that was drawn. It doesn't really matter where it came from. It's now in the pool. Awesome that you were able to bring that up because that was something that was, uh, you had a reaction to, right? So now it's on the table. It was not Remy that put that on there. Cool. So any, any other comments, comments or questions? So like, Remy as well, if you have any other comments in seeing it just anonymously here presented before the group, comments or questions?
Sure, I will add one thing, which is that I really appreciate the executive team, um, uh, notes. And I feel like especially the current efforts to address conditions of our buildings and parks and planning for future capital improvements and maintenance. I feel like, oh, I wish I had said that too.
Great. Awesome.
And Wendy? You know, uh, you know, we talk about having, um, goals that are specific and measurable. And I, and I'm guessing that we're going to have that opportunity to maybe look at that. But I go back up to under city council, invest in our youth, and that's such a broad statement. Are we talking about, uh, education, which we have no control over? Is that athletics and parks and rec and library? So I just make note of that.
Yes. Yeah, and that, you're, um, you're also thinking through the right lens. As we then go on to the next one, we're going to start thinking through that lens as we're narrowing down. And also even further, as we then identify the ones that we want to go even deeper to make sure that they're very specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and time coupled. So, uh, uh, if that were one that was moved forward, made it through the next lens, um, then we would want to get way more specific about what exactly that means, what the other priorities would be, are captured in that broad statement, right?
Mr. Mayor, that was mine. Oh, sorry, Zach. If you want, if you want to talk more about it, that one was mine.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, throw away in with my thoughts on this slide?
Sure.
Um, it's fascinating to read all the answers, and it's a little bit on the same with Remy. I sort of played the game theory thing, right? I tried to guess everyone's moves, think what wasn't going to be said, and said the thing that I felt was most important that I didn't think was going to be said. So I'm glad that, to find some things on here that are, that are touched. It's tough when you only get to pick one, right? Choose your favorite child, and you got to get rid of all the others. It's not a, right? It's a little bit of a Sophie's Choice, but, uh, um, which I, I don't understand that reference. Um, so it's just fun to see what, what else made the list and how important those things are. I'm glad, I'm glad that we're bringing along those things in consideration, so.
Great. Okay, so let me go to this next tab, and I would anticipate we'll have the most conversation around this tab. This is where we brought all of the, um, data that we have so far together. So I'll explain what it looks like. There's lots of colors on here. Um, we took, these are the objectives that you guys voted on from the strategic plan. You'll see they're on here in this column A. And in the strategic plan, there, column K is action priorities that were associated with those objectives. Right, so this is, uh, picking E3 and making them more detailed and what they were saying. We took the input from the city councilors and the department heads, and we incorporated them into these lists where they seemed to fit. So the yellow, I mean, the, I'm sorry, the blue old statements are the ones that you guys added on the council. So if you go down here, you'll see blue bold here. These two are blue bold, and then the, um, department head ones are the ones in green, except for there was one that I had to make black because it was highlighted here. These, these ones I made black. Um, this is also from the department heads. So, um, what we, we did then is that next step in refining, that's still a lot of action priorities, right? Uh, the next step in refining, uh, those action priorities is to identify a few things. We met as an advisory team, and we reviewed every one. And we looked through them using a lens where we would ask ourselves some questions. First question is, you, is it the appropriate level of abstraction for a city council goal? So an example of that would be, is it a policy direction level of priority? Or is it a, um, remember that four, plan, do, check, act? Where we live in the plan, city council does, we're the ones that are supposed to be high-level setting policy direction. Once it gets to do, check, act, we might be getting, um, reports back from staff on the do. Really, it goes into their realm once it's in the do. If it doesn't need policy direction anymore, it shouldn't be on a city council goal. So that was the first question we asked ourselves. Is it the appropriate level of abstraction? Be a city council goal, to be considered a city council goal. Second, uh, which is captured in column O, is we think, if it is, it fits that first test, do we think there is a gap in our performance on this particular, uh, action priority? And is so, is the gap caused by incomplete implementation of current policies? So say we don't have enough time or money or something, um, but it's really not, uh, it's because of incomplete implementation? Or is it because of, uh, need to create new policies and methods to address this gap? So what's the reason for the gap? Because certain reasons for gaps aren't necessarily things that city council would address. They would still be things that the staff would address, right? So if they're, if they haven't been able to get to it yet, and they just have to, uh, work on planning in the next round of, uh, funding to put it in the budget, and that's not something that needs to bump to be a city council level goal. Does that make sense to everyone? So this is something we used to use the results that we're going to show you. Any questions on those questions that we use to evaluate them?
You, you going to show us examples of ways to answer?
Yeah.
On the O?
So examples of how we processed it using those questions with the specific?
Um, examples of how you would want, what a, what an answer to that would look like.
Okay. We, we definitely can. So we're going to go through as E3 as an example.
Okay.
Um, so we need to expand our, I'm going to start with, well, a lot of these were a similar type of process. But let's start with bilingual pay incentive policy. So when we look at that and we think about what, who should be doing that work, really is not the appropriate level of abstraction for the city council because we don't need to give them policy direction necessarily to, uh, implement bilingual pay incentive, uh, uh, program. It would be part of a bigger, um, plan we give them direction on. So if we go all the way down, as we were reviewing these, if we go all the way down to this E3F, reason that, the ones in green were the ones that we determined should be progressed to then make smart goals out of. Because if you look at E3F, it's develop an inclusion plan citywide and by department, right? So within this, um, an inclusion plan would be bilingual pay incentive program or ADA transition plan. Those are more implementation for the do, check, act for the staff, right? Of us telling them it's priority for us to have this broad plan in place for us to be able to encompass inclusion as, on a citywide basis, right? So some of these ones, the bilingual pay, the ADA transition, the translation of documents, a lot of that should be within the broader plan. And we shouldn't necessarily be mic, I don't want to call it micromanaging, but going down to that level in our goals because we're policy direction, right? Does that make sense, Zach? You're not making eye contact with me. Are you okay? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was actually wondering. And maybe this is where, this is the, this is the water you're leading me to drink from, but, are there right answers and wrong answers for column N? Because it seems like there's just universally agreeable ones and, and universally dis, yeah.
So there may be some that we, when we're trying to wrap our head around, that are harder to say, oh, well, this one's kind of a gray area that is hard to determine. And there are other ones that is pretty clear. Like, um, procurement process is not necessarily, that's a, that's a process that's like a management process. Like a way, we'll be influenced by a broader inclusion plan or the way we order things. Really, the act of implementing a procurement process is management, right? So is it a different way? I can see you trying to figure out how to get your head wrapped around it. It will get easier as we process it. It did for us, like as we're going through these and we're, we're, uh, testing our brains to think about, okay, let's remind ourselves, level of abstraction the city council needs to be addressing, needs to be broad. Needs to be developing the plan, is then institutionalized and implemented by the staff. But we're empowering the staff by saying, yes, develop this plan. And then the specifics of the plan developed by our staff, right? They're the ones that are in it every day. They're the ones that are going to come up with a great procurement process that is a part of this broader inclusion plan we decide is a priority, right? And so that's the way to think about it. Is it, is it a broad plan that we're like talking about directional, all broad policy things that encompass a lot, you know, of the city? And we're creating a new plan to make this change? Or is it an implementation? Is it like that level of A priority, an action priority? Does that, does that make it any clearer? Yeah? Okay. You're not just saying that, right? You can ask more questions as we go through. Any other questions on this? Okay, on this, um, section, we'll go through all the sections. I want to make sure that you guys, uh, if you have any questions about what we concluded going through this, I want to make sure you guys have a chance to, um, like suggest changes or question it. And Susan, I think, is probably here, Jeff, and Claudia, Scott and Kelly. You guys can weigh in also on what we were thinking when we decided. Um, so on all of these, we didn't, um, kept these bolded so you guys could see that these were added. We decided that all of these should be a part of an inclusion plan. So in, in coming up with an inclusion plan, we should think about LGBTQ community and all other community, communities that are in there, and that should be a right level of abstraction is to have the plan that's comprehensive, right? Although what they, um, one in green would be the only one that would go forward, and we would decide what the smart goal is in relation to E3F. Any thoughts on that one?
Uh, Wendy? So, you know, like we have in the strategic plan, we have column A, we have the objectives for goal-setting, and then we have action priorities. Okay, so we're looking at this first group of E3, improve access by identifying and removing barriers to partition, uh, to, for participation. And then our, our goal in that area is going to be develop an inclusion plan for citywide, plan citywide and by department. Are we going to keep as subsections then all of those other things that we can referral, we can refer back to, to know that those were a part of the decision-making to go with E3F?
Yeah. And so that would be, that would be something that we would, that would be, um, additional information for department heads who are going to, as you'll see, the next step is they're going to go deep into these ones. This is giving direction to the department heads to make posed, uh, smart goals for us. Because they are going to know what's attainable, right? Uh, specific, measurable, attainable, and realistic. Attainable and realistic is going to be resources. How much, you know, because they're going to be doing all the other, like keeping our city going while they're making these pushes to, for improvements that we're giving them policy directions about putting energy in. to, for improvements that we're giving them policy directions about putting energy and resources into these improvements, right?
Right. And I just wanted to make sure that we mentioned that so that we didn't lose the input that came to the strategic plan and the input that came from councillors, that when we're talking about an inclusion plan, it ought to make sure that we get the youth in and we get these other elements in, because we put the hard work, the heavy lifting, getting data, we don't want to push it aside and say, oh, I forgot about that when it was in the initial plan.
Good point, yeah. And so, when, even at the stage where we're looking at developing the smart goals, we're still going to have the grayed out ones and we're going to talk about those. We're going to talk about the one that was selected. Then also, Mr. Mayor, I like that idea of keeping this information as we have that as a goal, as an information about what was determined be priorities within developing that plan. Really, the, the goal will have something to do with inclusion plan. We can give additional information about other ideas that came up that we want to make sure are included in that inclusion plan.
Thank you.
So, any other comments on E3? Do we, and if you guys feel comfortable with us approaching it that way? So, E3F would be the one that would go forward to the department head, be, come back as a smart goal. Okay. So, let's look at A3. So, A3 had five under them. And they were develop a definition of core services, establish a method to prioritize services with resources and maintenance needs, identify the true cost of services, develop internal and external communication strategies, and then the improve our communication structure internally and with the public was also mentioned twice by city councillors. So, that was added under A3E. And then A3E, right size services, address insufficient resources by finding new sustainable funding sources, which was also addressed by department head, who said, looking for ways to bring additional revenue into the city's general fund. And there was also an additional funding comment from department head. So, in this section, looking through that lens again, develop a definition of core services. With regards to whether it's an appropriate level of abstraction, it's probably more of a, a, an implementation goal, way it's stated. It's also, I felt like when you look at O, whether there's a gap in performance on that, I felt like that's pretty much in process and largely done. So, it's not really one that is a big push to have as an emphasis, a goal emphasis. It's in implementation, the plan do, it's in do, it's already do, and they're checking and acting and continuing to improve that process of defining core services. And so, that's why that one was grayed out. A3B, establish a message to prioritize services with resources and maintenance needs, also more of an implementation level of a priority and is being done already. As is identifying the true cost of core services, already well underway and has been done. We'll continue the do check act cycles within the staff, probably doesn't need to be a department head level focused goal. I mean, I'm sorry, city council level focused goal. And then A3B was one that we did determine, this is, there is, we feel like with regards to whether it's appropriate level of abstraction for a city council goal, we felt like it was. Obviously, it's been mentioned a number of times as being a gap in how we're functioning currently. So, O is there is a gap and we do feel like there's policy direction that needs to happen here with regards to how we design the plan. We think there needs to be a plan with regards to communication in order for us to be successful. So, it's not a gap in implementation, it's a gap in policy direction. And so, we did keep that in green because of that. And then A3E, right size services and addressing insufficient resources, yes, we felt like definitely that is the right level of abstraction for the city council. It's part of our core, our core service to the city is making sure that we have the resources to be able to do what we need to do. And then there is a gap, we identified, or we felt there was a gap and it definitely is a policy level gap. So, any questions on this section and any concerns about how we processed those action No?
Yes, sorry, I was trying to.
Oh, that's okay. I thought you looked like you wanted to say something.
Yeah, I got four monitors I'm running across here, so I got to the right one. I'm just curious, so, none of the city councillors came back with anything about the funding? That's all from the department heads?
Yeah, right size services. So, so, remember that they voted for that. It's just the missing, when you're, when you're saying if there's something missing, if you think it's already captured in that one, then you would not add it. You see what I'm saying? So, no councillor overtly said that. They, what got six votes. So, they were voting for.
That is a subset, okay, got it.
And that's a subset. Yes, city council strongly supported this one. Other questions on that one? Any concerns about narrowing it down to these two as the high priorities that move on to the department head? Okay, so this next section, Jeff was a huge help on this section. This section, so, Jeff, I wonder if it would be helpful for you to remind us where this section came from, because it's different than all the other sections, right? That's still there.
And I think, is Heather, Heather's on too. I may ask Heather to weigh in on this too. Just as a reminder, we chunked up the strategic planning effort into two different consultant contracts. We, we didn't design it specifically that way, but we felt pretty strongly that the economy or some sort of economic development component would be part of the strategic plan. So, we sent out a single request for qualifications, but we ended up selecting two different consultants. And so, we had one consultant team working on everything except economic development strategies and another consultant team working on economic development strategies. Heather, sort of the staff leads, I'm going to ask her to weigh in on this a little bit as well. And we, we folded everything into the final strategic planning document. And so, our, our overall consultants did get this information and build it into the plan. We also worked with a really broad set of stakeholders, some of whom were involved in the overall effort and some who were really focused on the economic development piece. So, the, the, the objectives and the action plans look a lot, look, look different in this piece of the plan than in the overall strategic plan. Part of it was simply related to the style of the, the consultant team and part of it was related to the level of detail and sort of the narrower, more narrowly focused stakeholders that were involved. And so, we got a lot more, I think, granular and detailed in a lot of these economic development strategies. We also have a number of them that were never really intended to be primary focuses of the city. And so, the team that worked on this also did a lot of work to identify sort of the lead agency or lead partner. And so, a lot of the things that are grayed out, aren't grayed out because they're not important, but because it's somebody else's job to take the lead on. And this council, the predecessor to this existing council, set, set up the Economic Vitality Leadership Council. And their task was to really act as an advisory body to both this council and our other economic development partners in moving this component of the plan forward. Does that sort of help from the kind of the city manager level perspective, Wendy? And do you want her to weigh in on any more of the, sort of the detail or the mechanics of how that process worked?
Sure. That's super helpful. And maybe I'll give Heather an option to weigh in if she feels like she has more to add. And if not, I can go through this and she can answer.
Yeah, just to verify, everything that made it into the city council strategic plan were the items that were identified as a city lead or a city co-lead that are in the ED strategic plan. They, they are much more granular, as the city manager said. And the reason for that is the group made an intentional decision not to lose any great ideas that were proposed. This had a lot of community input and so, we wanted it captured in the plan. And then the Economic Vitality Leadership Council's role is to move them forward as appropriate to achieve the overall vision. But the ones that are identified in the MACON 2032 Strategic Plan for City Council were the ones that were identified as, as a city role, either in a lead role or a supportive role.
Okay, great. All right, thank you, Heather. So, when we went through this, what we did was we were really, again, asking ourselves the question, was it a light, right level at abstraction? That it should be city council giving policy direction on a plan than would be implemented at staff or other level? And is there a gap? And is that gap because of implementation? Or is that gap because of a, needs a different policy direction? So, when we were going through, you'll notice there are a lot of them and we'll go through some of them, but I'll give you some examples. Develop a web-based dashboard that incorporates demographics, economic and real estate data to quickly assess trends, challenges and opportunities for prospective entrepreneurs, business owners and real estate developers is really an implementation level action, right? And, and we have a vitality committee, we have, because they're grayed out doesn't mean they're not going to happen. We have a plan in place to make them happen. It just means that it doesn't need input, policy input from the city council necessarily on the ones that are, on these ones that are grayed out. So, I won't go through all of them, but I'll go through a couple of them, for example. Identifying catalog sources for federal, state and county business incentives, including low interest loans, industrial revenue bonds, sales or property tax deferrals, new market and other tax credits. So, again, you guys are starting to see, this is more of an implementation item, right? It's a great idea. It's really not something that needs policy direction from a city council level. So, any questions on these ones or any one in, and there's one, like, for example, there's some of them that are grayed out because they're already done, right? So, assess land supply for commercial and industrial uses and document lands available for development at the findings of McMinnville's most recent economic opportunities analysis to clarify commercial and industrial land capacity, supplemental analyses as needed. So, there was a mix of them within this that were identified as, don't really need direction from the city council, have them going, not at a policy level decision anymore, they're really at an implementation, a do check act cycle, right? Where they'll still be moving forward without being a goal for the city council. The two that we did keep in were the first two. And those were develop and implement a coordinated onboarding system for new and small businesses in coordination with MEVP, McMinnville Downtown Association, McMinnville Water and Light, McMinnville Industrial Promotions, McMinnville Chamber of Commerce and other partners. And then E1E, coordinate effort to create branded online imprint materials to market business resources, potentially including a small business resource directory, a how to do business in a McMinnville guide and a handbook on licensing and permitting. Now, the reason that we left this in is because it does need to be given funding. And, and we don't currently have the funding to be able to implement that. And that would be a city council level decision. The funding from this would come from a business tax, so, which I know is a conversation that the city council needs to have. That's not something that department heads can decide on. So, the reason that we left those in green is it does need a conversation and a decision from, a direction from the city council in order to solve the gap that is identified for those two particular actions. So, questions about that, about E1A and D1B? And we would, our plan is to get more information about that in the next step from the vitality committee and from Heather, and hopefully have a little bit more information back to you about any direction that's needed from council. And Heather, you can weigh in now too, if you want.
This is Sal. I'm sorry, Heather.
My apologies.
My fault, you were asked to talk, but when you're done, I'd like to comment.
Okay. Just very quickly, this discussion's timely. Councillor Chenoweth is representing the council on the EVLC and they are scheduled to meet March 10th to start talking about priorities for this year out of the Economic Development Strategic Plan. And all five of the stakeholders at the stable table, so MEVP, MVA, Visit McMinnville, the Chamber and the city, are meant to bring three to four high priority strategies to the EVLC to consider. So, we would, Chris will be able to bring these types of strategies forward.
Great. Awesome. Okay, Sal?
Yeah, my question was just, is the only revenue source for this anticipated to be from the city? Because it, this seems to be one of those things where oftentimes when ideas get floated around in different committees, sort of a response like, oh, that's a different stakeholder that should be prioritizing funding for that. And I was just curious where that conversation was coming from in terms of the funding piece?
Sure. Jeff or Heather, do you guys want to?
Yeah, so, so when it was developed, the recommendation of the, so this was developed by a project advisory committee that was comprised of people representing the five economic development stakeholders at the table. And when these particular priorities were developed, they were developed with the idea that a business licensing program would be able to fund this type of effort as a sustained resource. And so, there, and there was a program that was developed as part of this in terms of what the business licensing program would look like and what the resources would be.
So, what, what you're saying is the, the, I'm just trying to understand, so the five groups that were part of that stakeholder meeting were the ones that were suggesting that we do a business license to fund this program?
They were suggesting, so nobody had additional, nobody had the resources to fund these, these types of programs. Several of the ones listed under D1 actually that are structural and in nature. Nobody has, nobody has the staffing capacity or the funding resources to dedicate the time and structure to putting these programs together. And so, it was concluded that there needed to be a new resource to do so. And then looking at other communities, one of the, what other communities use is a business licensing program to do so. That doesn't mean that they all voted to support a business license program, because once the strategic plan was developed and adopted, the city did put one together based on that request and started sharing it with the other stakeholders. And the chamber did express their concerns with it and that's when the city put it on hold. So, it is something that continues to need to be dialogue.
Got it. Thank you for that detailed explanation, Heather, I appreciate it.
Other, other questions on, or other comments on this at this stage? And like I said, this enables us to carry it forward and we will be getting feedback from Heather and vitality committee. Make sure that we have captured what, what they need policy direction from the city on. We haven't done that step yet.
I have, Wendy, two quick comments and they're, they're not really specific to what you're asking, but they are specific to what's being discussed and what we're attempting to do right now. The first one is I just wanted to clarify, the last time that this conversation came around, I got a tremendous amount of feedback from people that thought the city was about to implement a business tax. So, I just wanted to add some clarity for everybody listening that there's, this is not, we're not about to implement a, 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 a business tax or a licensing. This conversation is not a direct lead to, 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 you know, there won't be something in front of us next week implementing a, a, a business license or a business tax. So, I just wanted to add that clarity. And then. And then just in terms of being able to do my best in this process, I'm wondering if you can zoom in on your screen. I can't make it any larger on mine.
I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, of course.
Thank you.
One second.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Anybody else is having, it's, it's hard for anyone else?
Is that good?
Oh, that's so great.
Good. Thank you.
Remy, my screen's so big, you can have half of mine, man.
And I have it on this big screen next to me, so I can, and.
So thank you for that, Remy. I want you to be able to read it. That's great feedback, and I misspoke about that also. You know, and one thing that we might do with regards to this is instead of narrowing it goal down, saying a business license or anything like that, we could identify the things that are lacking funding, and maybe that becomes part of the goal. So, I mean, it's whether or not we want to carry forward with the, the goals under D1 or the priorities under D1 need direction from the council and may need a funding source from the city. It might need direction from the city council, right?
And Wendy, and again, maybe in this area where it's economic development, we have mechanisms in place, we may turn over some of those ideas over to the Economic Vitality Group, who can do the legwork and then bring it back to the council, and then we need to make a policy. Doesn't mean that we have to, we, we've got groups working on our behalf that can really dive into some of this and come up with some great ideas. But at the point where we find the, the, the funding mechanism, that's where the council will need to vote to move it back.
Exactly, yeah. So it might be a broader conversation than what the consultants have given us so far, where we say, we're not ready to talk specifically about that, ask that business license, but we do think that needs to be a goal of the city council to generate a plan for sustainable funding for these things this year. So you're giving a specific directive, the Vitality Committee, who by the end of the year, we want to have a plan for sustainable funding and that very specific about what we'd like to accomplish with regards to that by the end of the year.
And I, I will ask one other question. I don't know that I know the answer, but we also have the opportunity, if we come back and we don't feel like the business tax is the mechanism to fund this, we still have the general fund to look at and to train, trade some priorities in that general fund. Now, that probably pulls more of Jeff's hair out, because he's in the budget process right now, but there are many ways that we can approach this from a funding mechanism is my, is my feel on this also.
So are we in support of, like I said, this is going to be a little bit of a different one, because I do think we need to gather more data from Heather and the Vitality Committee, and hopefully they'll be able to give us more direction. Are we in support of, under D1, having something come back from those sources, gives us an idea of what direction and what funding we might need to look at as a goal for this year? Okay, I have a thumbs up from Zach, and I think it sounds like we're good on this one. Okay, so the next one was F3, and this also got six votes from the city council. And this had one, two, well, the top two, again, are the ones that were added by the city council. And then next, three, four, five, six, seven, were the ones in the strategic plan. So the ones from the city council were create and implement an environmental sustainability and/or a climate action plan, urban reserve area process, conduct a community visioning project, update a long-range land use plans, evaluate and plan for city service demands based on growth and development impacts, set a policy for updating facilities plans, the current effort to address the condition of our buildings and parks, and planning for future capital improvements and maintenance. F3E is ensure that plans are flexible enough to respond to emerging trends in technology. F3F, these last two were added in the subsequent meet, uh, uh, goal setting that we did with Eric Jensen. Evaluate smart city principles and identify a strategy to operationalize environmental sustainability and efficient use of resources, which we, uh, were, was captured in that first one that was added this year as well. So reasoning behind the ones that were grayed out, conducting a community visioning project has been done and is a part of implementation of a lot of the different planning, long-term planning that we're doing. So more operational and high-level policy direction. Update long-range land use plans, it's being worked on, it's in implementation now, it's part of the planning department's work, work plan. Evaluate and plan for city service demands based on growth and development impacts, the same as the other ones, it's more in implementation. Updating facilities plans. So this was also added by department heads, but in talking about it in the advisory team, this is a part of how they do their job, is by updating those building and park plans. And so they were thinking that this is more implementation, that it doesn't really need policy direction, it's continuously being worked on by the department, departments and the staff. And then ensure that plans are flexible, again, evaluate smart city principles, and identify the strategy was in the first one. So that's why those ones were determined to be ones that we wouldn't necessarily carry forward. Any questions on those before we talk about the ones we did? Oh, you, okay, Zach?
Not only you have to raise it, you gotta lower the hand, too. I think it's worth, worth a minute to dive into the F3D. I, I, I get, I get what you're saying on that, but as, and it's back to, what's your favorite child? Pick two out of the three. I don't want to lose the two that are green, but I think it's, I think F3D is super important, too, and let me throw this one out as far as how it blends into policy, but right, if we move on from the community center, who decides what happens to that? Is, what, what level of discussion is that at? And, you know, we're guiding the discussion through the community effort, and we'll make recommendations for what we're doing with two of our most current issues, and I think we're also kind of navigating the voidables of the fire district, which is going to talk about how we're going to handle or will lead to the conversation around how we have the fire department, and I think there's going to be a consolidation and a rejiggering of the potential administration as we look at building new buildings and, or, and off, offloading current buildings. So I, I don't know if I'm necessarily willing to give up some of that direction, because I think those are important conversations that we need to have with the community on what they want to see and what we think is physically prudent. So I, I don't know if we're, I don't know. I, I, I'd like to see F3D added to the green as well, but I get, I get your points, too.
Yeah. So I wonder if Susan or Jeff, do you guys want to weigh in on policy direction with regards to facilities updating? I, I see that this could be a gray area for sure. What, um?
And maybe, maybe it comes back as more pointed questions, right? We've already done the facilities assessment, we're, we've had results from that, and we've gotten specific questions brought up and answered and marched, marched forward. And maybe we've already sort of, I don't know, maybe, maybe that's, that's a, that's, it's going to boomerang back. We've already, we've already decided we need to have that conditions assessment done, and now that'll yield more specific questions as they come back?
Yeah.
I'm interested in your staff.
So as they, as they implement what we've already given them direction on, we will hear back from them when they need for us to give input, but it doesn't need to be driven by the council anymore, was basically, is, is highlight of what I heard. But F or Susan, do you guys want to weigh in on where, what you guys feel with regards to whether you, policy direction on facilities versus having it be something that's just a part of how you guys are doing your planning?
I would say that the, and Wendy explained this so well when we were in the subcommittee, and this one came up. I think we also talked about that that wasn't necessarily strategic. Updating the plans and moving them forward wasn't necessarily the type of thing that fell into that category of a, a strategy or a goal. The council has already given us direction on that, so we are in the implementation, implementation phase. I don't know, Jeff, do you want to add anything?
I would, I would echo what Wendy and Susan have said, and also indicate that the, the policy for updating facilities plans doesn't imply or suggest that the council doesn't have a role moving forward. In fact, those are policy-level documents that go through a public engagement process, that go through an iterative process with the council, through work sessions and council meetings, and ultimately are adopted by the council. So there's still a lot of touchpoints for the updating and the implementation of each of those plans. But the, we're going to start working on our facilities plans is sort of in the works. So does that make, does that help a little bit, Zach, the sort of combined answers?
Yeah, it does. Yeah, I just had to play that out where we are on the road, what we've already done, and, and yeah, that, that makes sense. I, I just think that one, unlike a lot, a lot of these, has the chance to have the biggest things come from it, like building new pool, you know, that kind of stuff. So, but your explanation makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just as a, you know, another example, we don't, you, you don't have to tell us each year to build a balanced budget, because we're obligated to do that by the law. And so we do that every year, and that doesn't mean the council's not involved. In fact, you have to review and approve and adopt a budget as part of the Budget Committee and as a body on your own. So just the, because it's not a, you know, because it's not a high-level priority in the strategic plan, doesn't mean it's not work that gets done, and it doesn't mean it's not work that doesn't happen with council authority.
Yeah.
That totally makes sense, and we're getting full life out of that, that diagram that Susan made with the red funnel and everything going through the red funnel. So, but that, that, that makes sense.
Awesome. Okay, any other questions on the stuff that's grayed out before we talk about the two that we kept in green? Okay, so the two that we kept in green were the create and implement an environmental sustainability and/or a climate action plan, and then urban reserve area process. Reason we kept these in green is obviously, you know, when you're looking plan due, check act, yes, both of those are kind of picture, policy direction type of priorities. And also, there is, we don't currently have that as policy direction. It's not, there is the gap that we have identified, that the city council has identified, is a policy-level gap that we would need to make a decision on and drive forward. So any questions on those two? So, so those two would be, go on to department heads, and particularly with number 50, you guys are going to have a presentation from a gentleman tonight that's going to give you guys more data. I think we might have a special session where we talk about that to make sure that, because that is a broad category. Making sure that there's cohesiveness in the vision on the city council might be a good idea before we get into the specifics of goal setting. I don't, we currently have that documented, and it was silent in the strategic plan, and this body hasn't decided on that vision. So it might benefit us to have a visioning and the gap, where we are now and the gap analysis to determine what incremental step is for this year that would get us closer to that vision, right? But we might handle that one a little bit differently than the other ones, because there might be some more deep work, thinking and conversation that needs to happen in order for us to identify, give direction to the department heads, really, about how to make a smart goal out of that one. So that one will probably take a little bit of a different path.
Yeah, because tonight starts the process of learning for us, and we're just at the beginning.
Exactly. And so, so if, I'm assuming we'll decide to move this forward. If we move it forward, we'll, we'll do some more of that thinking work after you guys have the education that you have tonight, so that we can make sure that we're, the city council's on the same page and has alignment around a clear vision, and then we can work on identifying where we are now, the gap, and then the incremental step for this year.
Chris, you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, for those who are online, if you notice, I am yawning. It is not because I am bored. It is a bad habit. When I really start focusing, it runs in my family on it, oddly enough, that when I really focus hard, it causes me to yawn. So I don't want anybody to think that I'm finding this boring. Secondarily, I want to repeat something that was said, so I can, in, back in, in, in my words, so I can make sure I'm understanding this correctly. Because what Zach said really struck a chord with me when it came to F3D. So just because we are not keeping them green, that doesn't mean we've released and said, you're going to do whatever you want to do. It just means that it's already going through a process, and there's going to come points where that could come back to us for more policy setting, i.e., the perfect example that he used was, what are we going to do with the community center if and when they, there's approval by the voters to fund a new, a new one? That kind of stuff will come back to us. This, this is not us releasing these specific items, correct?
Correct, Chris. And, and again, anytime that we would be going for funding a bond, that has to come back to the council. If we were to sell assets, that comes back to the council, or big assets, okay? That would come back to the council. So you're absolutely right.
Think about it, I, helps me to think about it this way. If we have it as a goal for the city council level, it means we have to get the flywheel going on a new policy direction, right? So we're, it's not underway, it's not in an implementation process, it's a big plan step, hasn't been done, but we need to have it in our purview to get that flywheel going on a plan, is then later on down the road for the next five, 10 years, going to be in going in implementation, the new check act? And in that process, things are going to come back to the council in that cycle of check act, right? If the flywheel isn't going on a plan, and the city council needs to give direction to get that flywheel going, that's what should be on our goal. Does that make sense? Okay. Any other questions?
I think I understand automotive metaphors less than sports metaphors, and I don't believe, but I, I'm Googled flywheel, and I got it. I got you.
I'm going to need to figure out, tell me what metaphors are good for you. I'm going to figure out the metaphors that work. Okay, so is everybody in support, then? These two will, will move forward, will have a different path for, one on climate action, environmental sustainability, the other one will go the path of department heads. Feedback. Great. And for the next one, C4, odd exceptional police, municipal, court, fire, emergency medical services, utility services, and public works. There were four under this one. We grayed out the three that were develop or establish standards for training, response time, and staffing, because it's more of an implementations level of priority. Develop external and internal service standards and quality management evaluation, again, and implementation priority. Evaluate, pursue, and maintain accreditation that is appropriate, is more of an implementation level. Identify a strategy for long-term increase in stable public safety services, fire district evaluation and implementation. Group, the advisory team determined that that is still a policy direction level of a goal that would, would proceed on to the department heads to make into a smart goal. Any thoughts on that?
I, I noticed, I think, and specifically in the last category, you brought in a verbiage from the what's-missing things that were submitted, climate action plan. Was part of the what's-missing thing about factoring in LGBTQ2, the LGBTQ community into our thought process, I think referenced this C4, if I'm not mistaken. And if that's the case, I'd like to see that also brought into that consideration.
So, so the comment for the LB, let me see, the.
Or did it, if I made you wrong, or did we already put it in here also?
Yeah. It's right here.
We just put it in E3, okay. Man, that was like an hour ago.
I know, a long time ago. So that's, and that's part of the, we determine, part of the inclusion plan. So the inclusion plan is the broad flywheel or whatever. of the inclusion plan. So the inclusion plan is the broad flywheel, or whatever L2W is, that we want to get going that includes, you know, LGBQ.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so let me get down. So any other questions about the long-term increase in stable public safety services?
It looks like we might be an eighth of the way through the spreadsheet, according to your little slide bar over there.
No, this is the last one, really. You're good. I thought this was going to be a quick meeting, but it takes a long time to go through this stuff. Okay, so if nobody has questions and people are in favor of moving now and forward, we'll go to, this is actually the last section. C3 is lead and plan for emergency preparedness. And that had, let's see, it looks like six under it. I'll go through the gray ones first. Allocate resources to planning and training, an implementation stage priority, develop a safety plan for each city building, part of implementation, educate and train staff about roles and responsibilities, again, implementation, update continuity of operations plan is implementation, and leverage local private resources in event of large emergency is also an implementation priority. One that we kept as green was establish a formal emergency management program. And if you think about it, the standpoint of getting policy direction on creating the momentum of a plan that then goes into do check act, we felt like that is one that could use a policy-level goal from the city council to get that flywheel going. Questions on that? Or comments? Okay, so that's, these other ones down here, I kept them in green, and I didn't gray them out because they were from the department heads. But in going over them in the advisory, communication was already included up above. Succession planning, they felt was more implementation as well as risk management, management, all implementation doesn't need the city council input on that, policy input on that. So, next step, any other questions on this before I then go back to the slides and we talk about next steps? Anyone that we need to go to in particular? Okay. So what we're going to do next then, two things I need from you guys tonight is, one, we need to get a general approval of narrowing it down to the ones in green. And two, I need an approval on letting the department, giving the department heads the directive to give us, to send back some proposed smart goals out of this, are reasonable and attainable, or an incremental step for the city to take on, to have as a goal for this year. Remember, we're going to be using this as a scorecard, and we're going to be evaluating how we do against that scorecard. And so we want to set ourselves up for success. And first thing we need to do is be realistic about our goals. Go ahead, Chris.
So I assume that, first, are you going to need a motion for this, or just general agreement?
Go ahead. Got, probably just general agreement, right?
Okay. And then secondarily, I assume that when we give it back to the department heads, they're going to go through the ability of determining what they are, have the capacity to actually accomplish. Whoops, somebody turned me off.
Yeah.
So that we're not overloading them. I look through some of this stuff, and I see some of this stuff as being pretty heavy lifts. What I don't want to do is be assigning more strategic goals than they have the capacity to complete.
Exactly. You're so right. And that is one of the reasons, one of the things that I think is really beneficial about that approach, is that we're going to be looking to them to do resource analysis, right, across these goals that they're making. And they might come back and say, we really should only have four. Or they might make the incremental step smaller in order to make it realistic with the number of goals we have, right? Those are the questions that we're going to be asking as we're developing the smart goals. And they have, your point actually, counselor, they have a knowledge, working knowledge to be able to assess that, right? So resource assessment is going to be a part of the department head step, will then give us feedback about, really, can we even encompass all these goals in this year? And if so, what size step can we take without overloading our staff?
And I assume they're all on the call right now, is that correct, or a good portion of them are? So I would like to really emphasize that for me, it is more important that we do the job well than we do all the jobs. You know, if we give too much assignment, and as a result, get nothing done well, that to me isn't a good result. I want to make sure that we're being very purpose-driven, that we want to make sure that whatever is being assigned is within access, accessibility of being accomplished.
And Chris, and to that point, look at, look at column K, and that's where everything was, and the department heads had all of that. What we've done now is narrowed it down tremendously. And to your point, we've had discussions with the department heads already, and now they're going to even refine it better. So we have just lifted total burden off their shoulder, and off of the city council's shoulder, too, because we've narrowed this broad, data-driven strategic plan down to executable specifics.
Well, except, is that true, Mayor Hill? Or, because it sounds to me like a lot of this stuff they're still going to have to do that's in gray. It's not that we actually took it off their plate, we just said it's really not on our plate as city councilors developing policy. And they're still going to be stuck with a lot of this stuff, of stuff that they're going to have to do. And I'm not meaning to argue, I just wanted to clarify from my own understanding, because that's what I heard in this back and forth, there's a lot of the gray that was taken out from our purview was because it's implementation, it's not for us. It's for the departments already.
Right. But remember that we're only looking at five key areas. There are 20 other areas that we didn't even look at, and we've taken that kind of off of their plate. So again, we've narrowed it down. And when we just gave the strategic plan, that was a heavy load with no direction.
Right. And I just want to make sure the department heads hear that from at least this city councilor, that I'm not interested in giving them a ton of work that they can't do. I'm interested in giving them what they can do and do well.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Can I just clarify one thing that Councilor Chenoweth brought up? There is, there are two agenda items for your regular meeting where you will be approving, well, you will decide whether you will approve the updated city council priorities list from the work session, and approve final steps for the 2021 goal setting from the work session. So they're assuming that the council decides to move forward, there is an opportunity during the regular meeting to do that.
Gotcha. Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification. Great. Thank you for that, Councilor Chenoweth. Okay, so any other questions on this? Or changes that we'd like to make before we, the department heads that go ahead to get us some straw man smart goals? Okay, Councilor Chenoweth is on board with that, counselor. Mayor Hill, do you want to just get, see if there's anybody, get a general consensus for us? Although it sounds like you're going to do it in the meeting.
Right. But I think we've had an opportunity to discuss at a very specific level, and I think we've answered our questions. I think, Wendy, thank you for the opportunity to really go through this process. Know that the advisory team spent as much time. So Jeff, you've got your hand up, so let's go ahead and.
He doesn't have his hand now.
He just can't get it down. Okay, so back to you. Wendy, anything that you need to follow up before we close our work session tonight?
Really? I didn't have much else. After getting, making sure everybody understood that, I'll share my screen just one more time, and just say, the next steps are going to be, the department heads are going to create the smart goals, we're going to have a deeper conversation around environmental stewardship, get, make sure the vision is, we're in agreement on the vision before we do the current state and the gap, and then get specific on the goals. We're going to review the smart goals that they come up with and discuss them in session four. So expect to see that coming back in session four of the goal setting. And then the last thing we will do is we will be approving them in the session five. So any, unless there's any questions, as long as we get that approval, then we're on our way to finding some great goals for this year, which is kind of fun.
Thank you, Wendy, again, for your insights and helping us get to the point where we're at. Truly, from my perspective, I can see there's still a lot of work to do, but there's light at the end of the tunnel. And we've brought us together in a broad sense to a more, as we say, measurable, specific, so that we can truly implement where we're going. And so with that being said, I think we'll go ahead and get to a point where we will dismiss or adjourn from the work session this evening. And let's see, Claudia, do we stay on this line for city council? Yes, we do, Jeff says. So we've got about seven minutes for you to get up and stretch, and then we'll be back for city council. Thank you all.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.